Okay, Mr. Doyle, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call to order the two hundred and third section of the tenth council at six P M. on December first, two thousand and twenty. Before we start this meeting, there will be no toleration for any outbursts. Please wait till your call on. If you cannot follow the directions of that meeting, I will ask you to leave. So, Mr. Doyle, roll call.
Carter.
Crawford.
Miller. Edela.
Here.
Shramsky.
Present.
Taylor Burks.
Present.
Waterman. Williams.
Present.
Present, you have a call.
Okay, can you call Miller again? I think she's here, but I don't see her microphone connected to.
Miller.
Okay, until she gets in, can I get a motion to excuse Councilwoman? I'll get those right now. Can you call Miller again?
Miller.
Present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can I get a motion to excuse Councilwoman Waterman?
Come on.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Yays, no nays.
Okay, which brings us to amendments to the agenda. Is there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, seeing none from everybody else, I would like to move item number nine above items number three and four.
Don't move. The part.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Sound love to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Yips.
Yes. Uh, Mr. President, can I ask a question here? I'm sorry, backed up. The approval of the minutes, uh, the approval of the minutes with the...
We haven't... We haven't, we haven't got to that. That's next.
Oh, okay. I just think, because I know it was the minutes, and I can talk to my... What, what, wait? Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. We're just approving the agenda. Can you start the roll again, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Edela.
Yes.
Six chays.
Okay, agenda is approved, which brings us to the approval of the minutes. The first one is November twenty first, twenty twenty special meeting. Mr. Clerk, the note says that the clerk is requesting the minutes be deferred for one week due. Did not receive agreement between the city and Pinacapito that was approved during the special meeting. Have you received that information, Mr. Doyle?
No, I have not, Mr. President.
And, okay, Attorney Giff.
Through the, through the President to the interim clerk, the agreement that you're looking for, we had originally attached the draft agreement. Do you want the executed final copy or the one that was originally attached to the memo? Because I can, I can get that out to you tonight, the executed copy of the, just whichever you prefer.
I think we need to have both for the minutes. Attorney Sharp.
Um, just to come in, I saw Attorney Giff that it was supposed to reflect, it would be different because it was supposed, well, it would be actually the executed, because it was supposed to reflect the letter being with the language incorporated by the terms here and incorporated by reference. So, I think that's why the clerk didn't use what was initially handed, because you were supposed to modify it. So, the executed, I would, I would think that would be, that would be what you would include.
So, so, Council President, I, I'll, I'll send over both versions, the original and the executed, because Attorney Sharp is correct that we did add language under the public-private partnership section that incorporated the terms of the letter that was submitted. And so, I'll send both over, so he'll have those, both of those documents. I, I did email it, the original version with the memo, but I'll make sure that he has that copied as well.
Yeah, because that was the crux of them pushing through the vote on that Saturday instead of waiting till Tuesday for it to be firmed up. So, without those amendments, I would ask that we don't vote on any of that, because the crux of the urgency that you guys displayed at that Saturday meeting, it's my objection, was to make sure that the document was executed with the intent of the letter and to be included, doesn't have to be. So, is there a motion to defer the minutes from November twenty first special meeting for a week?
Move. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported.
Yeah, you can't, can't get nothing from this document.
Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, I would just like to point out one thing, that generally, when you have minutes, you do not have an executed copy, because an executed copy was, would say that the copy had already been executed at the time they had the meeting, which is never the case. So, I think it might be misinterpreted. The executed copy should be in the clerk's office, that's right, because all legal documents, should the clerk should have a copy of it. That's where that's transacted. But, of course, so.
Okay.
You can do it any day, but I'm just pointing that out.
Mr. President.
Hold on, Mr. Clerk, just really quickly. Part of it is, that's the normal case of transactions, but Councilwoman Edela made a motion that the letter be incorporated into the agreement at that time. And so, that has not been reflected in the minutes that were presented to the clerk at this time. So, both need to be given to the clerk, and then we can go over with the city attorney next Tuesday, what needed to be included in the minutes or not, just so we're in compliance, but not only the O B A, but that we... But, just for the record and for the people, that vote on Saturday was to include that in the documentation, and the minutes that were, we were being asked to pass today does not include that verdict whatsoever. And so, we've made sure that what was transacted, especially when you're talking about seventy point four million dollars, is clearly spelled out as a council action for the people to be able to follow and track. So, the normal course of action needs to not only be followed, but we need to make sure that we have extra clarity for the citizens of Pontiac, so they'll be able to track what happened, which is particularly business dealing. So, we already had a motion on the floor, we had city council discussion, and we have a roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Yays, no nays.
Thank you, which brings us to the approval, and it's from November twenty fourth, twenty twenty formal meeting. Is it motion?
Move. Sound love. Support.
Okay, I'll take the move from people of the support from Miller. Any discussion? CNN, roll call.
Williams.
Upstain.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yep.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Five yays, one upset.
Okay. So, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty are approved, which brings us to public comment, Mr. Clerk.
So, I received one public comment from Larry Jasper, and it reads, Dear People of Pontiac, Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I want to take a moment to thank council, been Randy Carter and his wife's state representative, Brenda Carter, for delivering close to one thousand parking last week to Pontiac. I hope everyone has a little more hope in these trying days. Unfortunately, I have bad news for the people of Pontiac. The mayor and her executive team have purchased a school attached to the Ottawa Towers from December sixteenth, twenty twenty. This brings an additional cost and liability to the citizens, as there was no walkthrough, no environmental testing, no cost analysis of repairs before demolition. There is no real plan of action. The mayor signed a global settlement agreement, which really is nothing more than a purchase agreement for the acquisition of Ottawa, Ottawa Towers one and two, however, to get an extension, they agreed to purchase the school known as Purdue. In the recent closed session, introduced a proposal to circumvent the charter rules in Michigan laws. Why is this important? Because it affects the people financially and economically during a recession, adding more debt to the city, and who do you think is to pay? You. We need to stand behind Randy Carter, because he believes in helping the community and would never introduce emergency resolution if he did not believe it. He has read Omega's business plan and agree, as agrees. A year ago, the mayor posed to the council, she had a third party who wanted to use capital bonds to purchase the Ottawa Towers, with no plan or any financial documents to match the city of Pontiac's investment. This is illegal by the charter, state, and federal laws, and is a violation of the order issued by Judge Warren, as it causes injury to the citizens. The council did not see any documents before authorizing the mayor to sign the closing documents on school or global settlement agreement. They were given an alternative to the, to the fault, the city or vote for the mayor to sign the paperwork. Randy Carter tried to hear an emergency resolution, for this was the last resort, and would benefit the people of Pontiac. No, the mayor and her allies wouldn't let it come to the council, nor would they provide Omega a closed session to discuss intellectual property or funding mechanism that did affect the people of Pontiac. Also, the mayor and her executive team have misrepresented Omega's plan to the public and on record. We can fix this before January fourth, twenty twenty, when the city must close Ottawa Towers. If we do, they will get a contract, lose a million dollars, undefendable deposit, and be in default. What does Omega's partnership proposals do for the people of Pontiac? It gives them ownership through stock in the development, money and influence for families, it provides preference for people of Pontiac to be trained for high-paying jobs, it provides paid training and childcare for those people during the pandemic, and getting the needed education, it provides a long, strong local economy for small and independent businesses, and also provides fast and inexpensive benefits for Wi-Fi cloud.
Okay? That concludes... That concludes...
Which brings us to item number nine, which is a resolution to approve the city clerk's medical marijuana obligations. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just want to read the point of section three point one 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 of the charter that gives the city council the authority over the city clerk and not the mayor. So, just wanted that to be known, and trying to circumvent those roles and duties and responsibilities given by the charter is, I would landish. I would ask my colleagues to suspend the rules so we can vote. I'm voting no, but suspend the rules so we can vote on this item and move forward. I understand that everybody is frustrated about medical marijuana for various reasons, but changing the roles of this duly elected body is not the way to get these things done.
Mr. President, this was an administrative item. May I present that to the council as our normal process?
Like I said, I'm asking my colleagues to suspend the rules and vote on this particular item. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Don't move. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion from council?
Mr. President, I do have a comment, or two, or three.
Yes, Councilwoman Edela, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I heard, I think I heard you say you wanted us to vote, suspend the rules and to vote no. I'm going to say suspend the rules, yes.
But, Mr. Clerk, but before, for clarity, I say suspend the rules. I say that I am voting no. That's very clear.
Okay, but, and the policies and the procedures of two thousand and ten, you do have in there that we are not to say how we're going to vote? And that was the reason why I did not sign the ethics, and I'd get my butt chastised every time that's brought up, because I would not sign it, because I intend to tell the people why I vote, and that is my reason. But, this has been in front of the voters, August of two thousand and eighteen. At that time, we had a clerk, who the residents may not have known when they voted for the clerk to handle this, was very competent, very capable, but applied for running for another city. Unfortunately, she was granted that by the vote, and she lost. We ended up with the people voting for the clerk to handle this, not knowing that we were going to have another clerk, because we didn't even know for a fact that we were going to have another clerk. But, I think this clerk has had more than ample time and more than enough excuses when we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to get him the staff to move forward with this medical marijuana. And then, we heard that his priority was the election. So, we spent money, and we hired somebody to handle the elections, bringing him up, so he could handle this, this medical marijuana. I'm sure you all received the letter from Rubicon that, and Department, that they are going to sue us if they don't get an answer as far as what they can do next. And it's not the Board of Commissions, it's, it's got nothing to do with that, because it will take forty-five days before it goes in front of the Board of Commissions, after the clerk reviews these, and he picks his, he takes his election, and if he denies anybody, they still have a hearing to go to before they get to the Board of Commissions, which is at least forty-five days away. So, I'm going to ask that, yes, we suspend the rules and we move forward for the reasons what I listed before, not because of the mayor, but because this clerk is not, I think he bit off more than what he can handle. Let's put it politely. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. President, can I...
I, I should, hold on, I shouldn't even took discussion on suspending the rule. We can vote on that for a minute.
Okay, well, you voted it without something. Okay. I move.
Yeah.
Randy, put it.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Doyle.
Williams.
Yes, to suspend the rules.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Six chays, no nays.
Okay, now, is there a motion to vote on item number nine?
Uh, don't move. Just vote.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Now is the time for discussion.
Yes, I would like to...
Council discussion, ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Uh, Council President, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Now, this is my Edela, and I want to educate the citizens of Pontiac. From the beginning of this marijuana, it has been, the word I want to use is strange, because if you follow the meeting, even when we were speaking in person, that administration followed tooth and nail to not authorize some of these overlays. And finally, a year later, we came up with something. This is what's going on, citizens of Pontiac. They want to get rid of the clerk in order to bypass, go on to the planning, to get what they want with the medical marijuana. I'm going to explain to you. Anyone that know me know I'm not, I'm not unethical. This is what's going to happen. You're going to vote for it, get rid of it, you try to, actually, to me, it's like a coup. You know, you try to get rid of the clerk, so you can get what you want, the result. That's not the way you do government. We argue, we fuss, and we can't agree on everything, but we don't remove people because we don't like them. And I'll, and, and to do this, all this needs to do, citizens of Pontiac, is go to the planning committee, which is the body that does this. That is not under the council, that is not our purview to do this. This is up to the planning committee. Ask yourself, why won't they submit to planning? That's all I want. Just ask, why won't they submit to planning? I mean, it, this is the right of the body. Let's see what planning does. So, I'm just calling it like it is. I live here, I have to walk past you every day, I know I'm not going with anything that's wrong. This is where it's leading, and I'm going to say this, out of all the years I ever attended company with Council President Williams, he did on there, I have never, and you go back and look at it, look at the documents, look at any of the documents, where the executive side is telling us what to do, on paper. It's in the mayor's office. I would like to tell the rest, clerk, you do his job. I'm sorry, mayor, I don't remember ever doing a resolution to tell anybody on your side to do the job, like Chubb or anything like that. I wouldn't do that. This is such an insult to my intelligence as being a councilperson, we should defy. This is an insult. We deal with this, whether it go up or down, this is, this sounds per view if we want to tell the clerk what to do. He's under us. And I don't want to apologize to you, Doyle, for this even being on the, my apologies, please. I left on council party.
Council President, if I could have a...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Chuck. Excuse me, I'm, I, I recognize you do the talk on any legal issue that you have, but we do have hands that have been duly raised, Councilwoman Edela and then Councilwoman Shramsky.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, or, Mr. President, one of the things that we do know, and we heard it go in front of the planning commission, we've also heard from the planning manager, as well as the city attorney, on advice that they do not, the planning does not have to do anything. The clerk can go right ahead, and he can move forward with these, but he's holding back. And we have not one application that he has been satisfied with, or that he has finished with yet. And this is what was brought to us last year in January. So, we, we are not even moving forward, and this excuse that it needs to go in front of the planning commission for this, can, or for the Glenwood Plaza business, is ridiculous. You have heard from the planning manager, you have heard from the city attorney. That is not necessary. This clerk can go forward with it as it is, and he has yet used every excuse he can, that it has to go back to front of the planning commission, go back to front of the planning commission. Why can't you stand up and make a decision based upon the legal advice that you get from our clerk, or from our city attorney and from the planning manager? And you have multiple attorneys that you have hired to help you with this medical marijuana, Mr. Clerk, why can't you take their advice? And their advice is not to come back to the planning commission, it's probably to move forward, because we know we have heard more than enough times, you can move forward. We know that Manny called, I know, Manny called me today and said his attorneys have said you can go forward, that there is no excuse for it. And that was a very in-depth conversation with Manny, and there was also another conversation with Justin Dunneckis today, where they have all said it. And there's also a gentleman from our city who talked to you about this yesterday, and you gave him all the excuses too. It does, I'm sorry, I can't go along with it. I have called you in the past, and I have told you that if I'm elected next year, I am going to ask for a new clerk. So, that's what's out there. And I'm just one vote, there's seven, he works for seven couple persons. It's not just one person that he works for, and I have put it out there.
Please don't interrupt while, while people are talking, because it's hard enough for people to hear us online already, and so let people get out their thoughts, and I'll give everybody the floor. But, please, just have a courtesy of respect and invite her on the microphone. Are you finished, Councilwoman Edela?
I am, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, what we, what they have done here is arbitrarily rezoned for one entity, and I feel that's the president. And so, everyone who's outside of an overlay district is going to expect the same treatment, and it may not be possible, that's very dangerous. And so, what we need, and I believe it was Patrice Waterman who made the motion back, I think it was January twenty twenty, that the amendments be sent to the planning commission to allow these facilities outside of an overlay district, and that was in January of twenty twenty. And all we're asking is please amend that planning commission, and then we can vote these things up or down. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shramsky. We have Councilman Carter and then Attorney Giff.
Thank you, Mr. President. From the inception, we know exactly how the rules were being played. We know that the people at Glenwood Plaza, whatever their name is, played outside the box. They gambled, they lost. They cannot come in, Johnny come lately, and go ahead and bid. We did not, and I did not appreciate the overlay when the mayor created it. I did not appreciate when the overlays came in, also didn't appreciate the, the zoning to be on Walton Boulevard, he's the chef of this. There is no job for Pontiac, and I would ask the legal team, Chubb could do it, to go to the Secretary of State and find a job for Pontiac and find the pack, find the one who wrote the ordinance, because the way the ordinance was written, we cannot change one iota or anything until one year thereafter, all these applications have already been approved. And, nothing's been approved. We don't circle jerk for two years, playing, playing the mayor's and Chubb's game. Now, right now, no, I, I would not support them. They can actually go to Hades, as far as I'm concerned. They got to do the play the same game everybody else played, turn the application then time, you cannot, they did get a lot split, that's all they got, and, and, and I'm sorry. And, uh, and, and, and I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I gotta say from right now, I'm getting irate.
Attorney Giv and then Attorney Sharp.
Thank you, Council President, I just wanted to address a couple of, just a procedural and legal questions that, that, um, have come up in the, in the conversation. Uh, one, uh, from Councilwoman Shramsky that, um, uh, that they were granted some exception or, or special exemption. The conditional zoning that was approved by, uh, City Council for the Glenwood project is something that's completely permissible, um, under both the ordinance and the law. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act allows any owner of property to apply and seek a rezoning of the property that's based upon conditions that they would offer as a public benefit as part of that rezoning process. And so the City Council did approve that. Um, I would note that the City Council, um, as recently as, as two months ago, and Councilwoman Patrice Waterman's district unanimously denied a conditional rezoning, indicating that it was not appropriate for that particular portion of the city. That action by the council likewise was completely permissible under the law, that they would, you would consider and consider what's in the best interest of the city going forward. The matter being referred back to the planning commission would have made it, um, impossible to deny the application in Councilwoman Waterman's district, and for all the reasons that she raised, um, the children that passed by there, uh, the residents that were nearby, um, that was strongly supported by all the members of the council, and quite frankly, by legal counsel and, and Mr. Gustafson and others, um, this council would not have been able to stop that had the January referral been approved as submitted. A referral would open up these types of operations anywhere within the city, which would include all forms of, of zoning, um, within the city, just the very nature of the way the law works. And so the planning director, Vern Gustafson, has very appropriately recommended that it's not in the best interest, or is it, um, uh, in accord with the city's master plan and the city's longstanding ordinances, that there would be a blanket opening of those particular uses. And one of the interesting factors is that, that there's nothing before the city right now that would trigger a zoning or a planning review of an additional application. All of the conditional rezoning applications that have been applied under this have been under.
Letting gives.
And, and so the matter stands that, um, that particular application under the law is not permissible.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Sharp?
Okay, to that point, let me just say this, Attorney Giv, so I, uh, my position in terms of whatever comes before council properly, council has the right to make whatever decision they make. So if they vote, vote in favor, they don't vote in favor, they have that right. With that, council also passed a resolution sending the matter back to planning. To your point, I don't see how, again, anybody has the right to circumvent the proper legal procedure. If council made the decision via resolution to send their matter back to planning, planning has an obligation, right, to make a recommendation, whether they stand firm with their prior, uh, recommendation or not. But they don't just get to decide, no, because we don't think that this is going to be in the best interest of the city, it's gonna open up the floodgates, whatever their reasoning or logic, they don't have that right to do that. They don't have the right to circumvent the process. Council has every right to determine whether or not they grant something or not grant something when it's properly before them. Next, the issue with these names, I'm gonna say again, this is Monique Sharp's opinion, I would refrain if I were you all from using individuals' names. I just don't understand, you can get your point across by expressing the situation without using names. But this is not a good practice for you guys to keep giving these names and indicating conversation and discussion. I would suggest that you refrain from doing it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so there's the motion, um, it's been seconded.
Cause I, I thought you should be recognized.
Well, 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 problem.
Oh, I'm, I'm being censored again, Council President, I'm not allowed to speak.
Body attorney, yeah, no, you're allowed to speak.
Am I being censored?
When you're recognized, but there's a motion on the floor.
I have, I have raised, I have long ago, I just want to make a note that I was censored by me.
Did you, did you ask for the roll, Mr.? Yep. Carter? We're voting for number nine. This is.
If you vote yes, so if you want, uh, number nine to, uh, order the clerk according to the mayor, you vote yes, if you want, uh, uh, if you don't want that, then vote no.
No.
Roll call, Mr. Doyle.
I'm just, I understand.
Roll call, Mr. Doyle.
Carter?
No, I'm sorry.
Miller?
No.
Hiddala? You're muted. I'll start with Hiddala.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, yes.
No.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Two, two yays, four nays. Yeah, resolution fails.
Okay, which brings us to item number three. Um, I believe that Councilwoman Waterman asked at last week's meeting, I was not in attendance, uh, that, uh, marijuana be deferred to, uh, a subcommittee, uh, meeting. Um, so I would ask that item number three and four, uh, be referred, um, to, uh, a subcommittee to be determined, um, next Tuesday.
I support. I move.
Wait, wait.
Yep, go, go ahead, Attorney Sharp.
I was just gonna say, okay, referring it, referring it to a subcommittee, so therefore, what subcommittee, and you're saying having a decision by next Tuesday, or referring it to a subcommittee, like, I, I, I'm clear, that's the way.
Well, first of all, I understand the meaning of the subcommittee, because then you go for planning before it comes to subcommittee.
The planning has decided that they're not gonna hear it, so, uh, what subcommittee? Uh, I think we probably need to have a, a, ad hoc marijuana, um, subcommittee. So, um, so that can be determined, and if somebody wants to serve on that, they can defer those three people next, uh, Tuesday.
Okay, I guess I'm confused, so you, are you saying that you wanted to ha- have them meet before Tuesday with the recommendation by Tuesday, or are you saying refer it and then afterwards it can come back? Like, are, so are you saying by next Tuesday, if you wanted to pick, what do you think?
Forward to come back by next Tuesday, so we can set up a subcommittee meeting between now and Tuesday, and then announce.
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, okay. This be Michael, Wednesday, Thursday. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Any offense that it goes to a subcommittee, since only three members can be on that subcommittee, if they come with some type of resolution, wh- within, within at least two to three days, that, that, that resolve would have to come in front of, front, at least by email to the rest of the body, so we can add to or take away from. So how that might work? They, they cannot make the overall decision, they can come to some, some agreement, but it needs to be passed to all the councilmen within a time period.
I agree with you, uh, Proton Carter. And so, um, so what I'm saying is, go to a subcommittee meeting and then the presentation that comes to that subcommittee, um, what recommendations need to come to the body as a whole.
Thank you.
Well, it can come as a recommendation, and then you can digest it and have a week to then vote on it, then if that's the case. Because that would be the first time that the body as a whole would hear it. So just kind of be clear, that's, that's all I'm trying to get out, is to explain what your logic is with it. So you're saying for them to meet, come back, give a recommendation to the council, only as a recommendation, what their findings are, and then the following week, make some kind of decision, or?
Right. It really kind of depends on if the information is forthcoming, the recommendation might be that there's not any information to make a decision.
Okay, I got it. Just so that everybody's clear, that's what I'm saying.
But we need, we need to have time to really go into that, um, for the clerk and for the mayor and her administration, to be able to explain where we go from there. So we're not blocking down a hopeful council meeting, um, with, um, just medical marijuana. Um, so I would ask, um, for items number three and four to be deferred to the special medical marijuana subcommittee to be chosen by next Tuesday, um, of the council, and then to make a re- recommendation for the following Tuesday.
To be chosen next Tuesday? I, I'm, you lose me again, you said to be chosen, because you said that, you're, you're saying at first that they needed to meet by Tuesday, but now you're saying to be chosen by Tuesday, so what, what is it?
Yeah, to meet by Tuesday, not, uh, to meet by Tuesday.
To meet by Tuesday and have a recommendation by Tuesday, is that what you're saying? Or just to meet by Tuesday?
No, to meet by Tuesday and to have a recommendation by the following Tuesday.
Okay, okay, got it.
So I'm clear, Mr. Mr. President? You're referring this to, to the, the ad hoc medical marijuana subcommittee? Who is going to meet by, by Tuesday? I guess who, who's on the subcommittee, or?
Uh, they, they need to, let, uh, let me know who wants to serve on the subcommittee.
You can sign me up.
Me too, I'll take it up too.
So you have Miller, so then you, it seems like you have three members standing.
That's three members, yeah, you can't have.
Stramsky, Carter, and Miller. So they're going to meet by Tuesday?
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
By Tuesday, but I wanna, um, there's an alternate?
Oh, I ain't going over.
I, Mr. President, I thought, I thought that, uh, Patrice Waterman, uh, asked to hear that.
But she's, she's, she's out for the next two weeks, so. So I, I can't work with people that's not favorable, so. Um, so, okay, so we have Stramsky, um, Carter, and Miller.
And, and they're gonna meet by December eighth with the recommendation to the council
Okay, um, so I need a, a motion to suspend the rules, um, to defer items number three and four to the special medical marijuana subcommittee.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
This gets, this gets back into the voter initiative. The, uh, job for Pontiac that, 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 that the mayor so diligently supported and had town hall meetings, need to have a reference to the Secretary of State of who those individuals were who generated that voter initiative. Those were the questions that came up in creating this ordinance. We didn't make the ordinance up, they did.
Proton, uh, Carter, um, can you get with, uh, Attorney Chubb and draft a resolution on what you're actually requesting?
Yes.
That on the agenda for next?
Thank you, sir.
Um, you just asking?
Right, what the people voted for. We, we need to have it with those individuals.
What I'm, what I'm saying to you, just get with, get with Attorney Chubb so it can be going right, and then we can vote as a body, uh, up or down, if we want to continue with that action.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right. But again, I, I, uh, it's been, uh, moved and supported to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Miller?
Yeah.
Yes. I know, I'm unmuted, you're right, yes.
Stramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Carter?
Six yeas, no.
Okay, rules have been suspended, now I need a motion to refer, uh, defer items number three and four to the special medical marijuana, uh, subcommittee.
Move.
Forward.
All right, it's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Don't we have enough subcommittees?
Yes, but, um, I think this is a good blend, Councilwoman Pila, because you just spoke to the urgency of getting this stuff done. So I think it can only be helpful to have an ad hoc to really deal with this, people who are interested in getting this settled, so we can move forward, as you stated, it's been, uh, a couple of years since we've been working on this.
Well, why didn't we put together a subcommittee a couple of years ago? Why are, are we doing this at the last minute?
They didn't have.
This is, I mean, we're gonna end up with a lawsuit, do we realize that? That's right.
The, the story of America is anybody can sue, question is will they win, do they have a valid thing, so.
Oh, they have a va- Mr. President, they have a valid thing.
Listen, uh, Councilwoman Pila?
Yeah.
Either you want a subcommittee or you don't, you are welcome to vote however you say.
I'm not interested in a subcommittee, we're wasting people's time, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's fine. Is there, uh, it's been moved and supported, or do we need to get a move and support?
It's been moved and supported, moved by Miller, supported by Carter.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, I would like to be recognized.
Go ahead, Madam.
Uh, as Councilwoman Pila pointed out, we all received a letter today from the attorney who very explicitly stated the harm the city is under because of the delays from the clerk's office. Now, the council has voted not to do, to hold him accountable for these delays. Uh, the city has told him repeatedly, and all the officials, including the, both the city attorneys, that do not agree with the clerk's position, and right now, we are on the, we have to testify on behalf of the complainant. So I just want to let you know.
Three and four.
The fact that these are the items that we are voting on and because.
What does this do with item number three or four?
You censored me when I wanted to speak before, so I'm speaking.
Say, what does it have to do with number three or four? So are you taking this time or not?
From a legal perspective, very important as to what this does, further delay is more likely to result in litigation. You haven't allowed me to talk about this, even though you noted you would recognize me.
If you wanna, if you wanna issue a memorandum, I'm, I'm fine to, for you to do that, um, that's just another waste of taxpayer dollars, but if you want to do that, that's fine, I don't know.
As a record show that we are mostly censored, the public is not allowed to hear, what is the truth? What is the truth about this and what the city has been put in harm's way on behalf of the council president?
So now I have to mute you because you don't want to follow.
I will leave the meeting.
I, I recognize you, thank you very much, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would suggest to the administration and planning, if they provide us with what we're asking for, we may have a recommendation by this Tuesday, thank you.
Mr. President?
No, but the, the mayor left the meeting on her own and now she wants to be.
So therefore, I'm not in here because we need the mayor here for meeting.
She's back, she's back, so you can listen, you can, you can ride her co- hotels all you want, she's back, so there you go, so you don't have to.
I'm not riding anybody's coattails.
Roll call, roll call. Roll call.
Hiddala?
What about it? Yes, Mr. Clerk?
This is the vote. I'm calling the roll. I'm sorry?
No, we're wasting too much time.
Stramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
You're muted, Councilwoman Miller.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Four yeas, two nays.
Okay, thank you. That means the motion passes, which brings us to our next item. It's number five. Mr. Water.
Thank you, Mr. President. And what this is, some time ago, unbeknownst to what has been said, the medical marijuana process is moving forward. The growing processor applications are in compliance phase. And it was brought to my attention, the security portion of the applications need to be reviewed. A few months ago, the administration informed us that the Oakland County Sheriff would not review the security portion of the application. So therefore, we have to bring someone on to review the security portion of the application. So what you have for you is for Global Alliance Protective Group LLC to serve as the professional expert security consultant. So with the security portion of the application given review. So then therefore.
Mr. President, while he's waiting to be unfrozen.
Madam Mayor.
The state.
Recognizing.
Thank you. We'll deal with this issue next week so everybody can review it. Now we need to go to item number six, which is a resolution to support the utilization of South Boulevard Fire Station Number Two to provide free COVID-19 testing. I saw that was already on the website, so I'm glad I could bring it to the council. Who presented from the administration?
I am presenting this from the administration. This is the fact that there's needed for COVID-19 testing universally in order to help to curb this mitigation of this disease. The Oakland County did bring their first test site right here to Pontiac, but they're going to disband now the test site that's out at the Oakland County complex. And they asked if they could bring the Pontiac testing site to the South Boulevard Fire Station. So we have had the inspection have arranged to do that, and we're just alerting the council so you can sign on and affirm the need to have additional testing and the availability of this to citizens. And there is on the website now all people who call the nurse on call. So council would like to affirm this action and say that they choose to support the efforts of the administration and the city are taking together to help people who need to have testing so we can get the statistics, so we can do our part to spread this disease to help people to be diagnosed who do have that condition. And this is done in conjunction with the fire chief, Matt Cuddy, who has also signed the central local agreement. So we bring this to you at council's pleasure if you would like to sign on as well.
Okay, Councilwoman Pila?
Yes.
You had your hand, I think that was from before.
That was from before? Sorry.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to vote on this?
I'm out. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Roco?
Stramsky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eadla?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays, Mr. Carter.
Okay, thank you. Now I need a motion to vote on item number six. Item number six doesn't, to support utilization of South Boulevard Fire Station Two to provide free COVID-19 testing.
Move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to make sure for the record that in event that our vote of yes tonight doesn't have anything to do with anybody having any vaccinations within the city of Pontiac. I just want to make sure that this yes for testing does not have anything to do with any vaccinations that will be allowed in Pontiac.
I can answer that if you wish, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yes, the vaccination is not available generally yet, so no, this has nothing to do with that. This has to do with testing.
Madam Mayor, Mr. President, I understood that. I can put a point of reference out that I do not want a yes that the council approved to be utilized anytime for vaccination. That's all. I can speak separate languages. English is one of the mayor.
I understand.
Directly to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you all so much. All right, it's been moved and supported. Any additional discussion? Then Roco?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter? Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eadla?
Yes.
Stramsky?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Okay, thank you. Okay, which brings us to our next item, which is a contract extension for CleanNet of greater Michigan.
I can present as well and then have the DPW also film with this. So CleanNet is the company that we engaged to do the cleaning of the city facilities except for city hall and the fire station, the police station that is done by the employees that we hired. And so this is an extension of the contract. It also includes the additional duties they will have inherent to COVID-19 because we do have, the DPW is setting up additional sanitizing and deep cleaning protocols that we need related to that disease process protocol. So we have here Mr. Dan Ringo, who's department is the one who works for CleanNet and supervises them, was given a good performance report and is here to also speak in behalf of extension of this contract.
Good evening. Yes, thank you, Mayor Waterman. Good evening, council, citizens of Pontiac. Again, so what we wanted to do this year is, and as we're trying to do with all of our contractors, is have, before we come before council with a request for an extension, it has some type of evaluation of their performance. And with this, we pretty much took this standard key performance indicators as metrics that we are judging on why we're recommending that CleanNet be extended, one-year contract. As you know, their contract was a one-year contract with two one-year renewals as part of the contract that was approved by council a year ago. This was a company that came in that, again, as Madam Mayor spoke on, took over four buildings within the city's purview and beginning in January, and then when COVID hit, really kind of stepped up and provided deep cleaning as requested. And with the extension, what we have, because again, the language of the original contract direction extends allows for that out of scope work, and we have a rate, but because we're currently, you know, closed to the public, that schedule is postponement because again, when the buildings are closed, there's no need for them to regularly do deep cleaning. But once we're open, we have a set rate that is a significant reduction of what the original deep cleaning was because they will be on a schedule. So that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. And while we're requesting that, we included the scorecard. And just note that we fought with the managers of the various facilities, both senior centers, the courthouse, as well as Pyrex. And everybody has expressed their pleasure in CleanNet's performance and both in their communication and how they do their decisions. So that is before the council to approve a one-year extension.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ringo?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Miller? You're muted.
I just got a quick question if I can, what are you dear? This contract, I noticed it's for one year, so if everyone's salary is going to stay the same, nothing has changed, why not a two-year contract?
Well, Councilwoman Miller, it's my understanding that it's been the city's policy that there are contracts that we've done, and this is what shared with me inside DPW. And I've seen that with all of our contracts we've fought for council, they have been one-year, with one-year, with the ability to extend for one year each time. I would, you know, and we could talk about this in our subcommittee, is when you look at facility contracts and when you look at contract DPW, we would look to possibly have contracts that would extend or have longer length of contracts for many reasons, so we're not coming back every year. But I would agree, but again, the way the contract was approved last year is one-year with two one-year renewals. So again, that'd be something we would look at.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ringo.
Okay, anybody else have a question for Mr. Ringo?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Ringo.
Mr. Ringo, would you put that on your agenda for next week when we have our meeting, please?
Oh, definitely, definitely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, oh, Attorney Chubb.
I just wanted to say it allows for council to have some kind of oversight in the event that you are displeased or whether you would like a contractor to possibly improve. That's what it allows for. Like, I've heard over time, the displeasure with the garbage contract in terms of the length of time. So the purpose, I would say, in your one-year review is to be able to have some kind of control as to whether or not you really approve the services, you don't approve the services, or if you need to have some changes. When you start getting a long-term contract, then that becomes an issue like your garbage contract. Thank you.
Yes, and so we worked very hard on getting the policy for one-year contracts to be there. I don't know if you guys had the terrible grass cutting and the terrible snow plowing. And so when we did have emergency management here, the length of the contracts were enormous. There were six, twelve years, et cetera, et cetera. And so one of the things, when contracts came back to the council every year, was to ask for them to be one-year. And so they might be savings and having longer contracts, but it gives the council opportunity to evaluate and not be stuck into a contract if we don't like the service. And so that's the reason behind why we were so stuck on doing it in the one-year way because we got stuck with a lot of contracts that should have been evaluated and other things. And also, it keeps the city from having a lot of difficulty of having a long-term contract if we do want to switch, and we don't have to pay out that money. But we can definitely evaluate it at the beginning, but that was the reason behind why we did what we did.
Right, and I'm sorry, Council President, if I can just add, you're 100% right in the logic. And I think one of the things that we've implemented with our scorecard is putting metrics in place and even we can, you know, have the language that will allow for termination for performance because we are evaluating contracts now and meeting with vendors. Again, it's something that, you know, again, it takes a while to get it down, but we've definitely implemented that as you can see with our larger vendors. So something that we look to continue and have as a pattern of management. But again, I think it's not a one or another. It's a way in which we can kind of, if this will, will to extend, but also have those securities in place that allow us to terminate and switch if performance is not up to par.
Thank you, Mr. Ringo. Does anybody else have a question for Mr. Ringo? Okay, we can vote on this item next week, which brings us to item number eight. I see Mr. Adams was on line. Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Adams is here. This is the issue I brought to you a couple weeks. As you know, here are devoid of a deputy mayor right now. I need to fill this position very badly because the fact that the deputy mayor serves a great function. We're happy that the former deputy mayor was with us for six years. She signed on for two, but it was here for longer. As we say, many cities are looking for a deputy mayor who has that city managerial experience, and that is the focus with which I raise the caliber of the person at deputy mayor from what it had been in years before, which has served the city well, to have someone with that kind of background or experience. Takes a long time to find someone like that, and our, Mr. Adams, who you're all familiar with, has done a great job for us in pursuing that kind of personnel. So unless we have that kind of search to be done in a professional manner, we won't have the capacity to get someone here that will serve the city in that position. And also serve the council as well because, as you know, one of the things that we had worked out with the deputy mayor and Jane didn't do that as much as I would have liked her to. But I would like the next deputy mayor, one of the targets it will be, is to make the reports to council on a regular basis. And I think that would make a great relationship to be able to have you have more information on a regular basis. I couldn't do that on my own, but that will be one of the criteria of the next deputy mayor that comes in. So I think that will be pleasing to you as well as to me to have that. There's so many things going on in Pontiac right now. What I would have to do if we don't have that kind of search going on is to get the minimum people in here, maybe more than one. And as I said, I wanted to reach out to a number of people, somebody said local people, as well as maybe some of the young troops who are around who need training. So this is an open position. This is a chance to fill this and to do training as well as to open the operations and to get more support for not only the administration staff, but also to make that, those reports to council on a more regular basis. Mr. Adams is here. You well know him and you know what the expert job he does on professionalism that she goes for a search. And I would like you to seriously consider this proposal for him to do this search for us once again.
Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Adams. You guys have done an excellent job in the past with selection and bringing talent into the city. I would just make these two caveats on where my stance is in general. The city council as a whole has bent over backwards to not only give approved finance director and the salary to go along with that. The city council has also wanted to get the Phoenix Center deal done. With that, as of today, our parliamentarian, Eleanor Seaver, who hasn't been back in almost a year, has still not been paid for the work that she has been done for the city and served us notably. She has helped to make our meetings more efficient. I wish she was here now. I think it would help me, especially in this Zoom era. But she's not here because of the way that she was treated as a city, just because she worked for the city council and not for the administration. Secondary part is almost four or five months ago to this date, we voted to get a forensic audit done. That has not been approved until this point, yet still the administration. Yet still, the administration consistently asks for more and more services to be provided from the city council so they can fulfill their mandate under the charter, with not allowing us to fulfill ours. And so my stance on any of that is, when is enough enough? When are we as a council going to stand firm and decide that until the things that we need in order to carry out the duties that are created by the charter to do are done without approving it? We continue to award reward for this bad behavior from the administration to stall and not pay our invoices and other things. And continually, because we want the good of the city, we're continually working even from a point of disadvantage. So the council as a whole can do whatever they want. I just want you guys to know that that is what we've been dealing with and keep that in perspective. And then I'll turn it over to my colleagues and you guys can decide what you want to do. Councilwoman Stransky?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about this to the mayor. First of all, where's the funding coming from, the general fund? And do you have anything in your fund for this one-third of the salary that would be their fee? Second of all, are you the chair or vice chair or vice president of the Michigan Municipal League? Because I see that they offer these services. And we do have a membership. And I have in front of me Deputy City Manager, similar salary range, just a little bit lower, posted on MML. I also see similar position to, God, I don't expect you to do this, but it's just an example, Indeed.com for very large cities in Michigan, looking for similar positions. And those are just some of the questions I have. Why you don't utilize them? Have you, are you not pleased with their service, et cetera? Thank you.
I can answer those if you like, Council President. Yes, the first question was where the money was going to come from, the general fund. Yes, all of these, all of our expenses for the mayor office come from the general fund. In particular, this item would come from the deputy mayor salaries. You know, it is under salary because we've had that position vacant for a while. So there is money there to pay for the search, to fill that position. Yes, I am Vice President of Michigan Municipal League, which is lobbying group for so many municipalities in Michigan. I'm happy to have stepped up to that position. And yes, we have used Michigan Municipal League services before. In fact, I originally used it for the deputy mayor position years ago. They were not helpful in doing that. They do charge a fee for that. And it is similar to what any reputable firm charges, maybe only slightly less than Mr. Adams. We've had experience with Mr. Adams and that is why I prefer to go with him. Although the MML, as we sought after them, they sent us some temporary people, but not people who are willing to stay on for the full term. And that's more of what they are able to do just to fill in for kind of somebody who wants to come in temporarily just until you get some money full-time. So those are the things. And with regards to the forensic audit for your reason not to do this, we're not hurbling up anything, we're waiting for the forensic auditor to sign the contract. If they don't sign the contract, there's nothing I can do, all right? So, so each other said that, I just wanted to correct that, Mr. Williams, because it's actual reason for not passing this. I just want to put that in the right perspective.
So, so Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but so you're saying that the fee would come out of the salary you already have set aside because she has not been here for the deputy mayor?
Yes, we've been able to, we have, you tell me, do we have money in the, that hasn't been utilized? Yes, that's where it would come from. But not salary space. So it's no additional, additional amount that would have to be added to the budget for the executive office or for HR.
Okay, Councilwoman Cleveland, then turn to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Mayor, one of the things that we had with Joe Sivodor was more of a communication with the council. Is that something you're looking for with a new deputy mayor?
Absolutely, I'm going to look for someone who that will be part of the job description, excuse me, very much.
Please take that right.
All right, thank you. That will be part of the expectations as we go and, you know, different people have different skill sets. And so that will be one that I'll focus on because I think I would like council to be more fully informed of it, which is hard for me to do that on a regular basis. That's one of the assignments I'd like to have the deputy mayor do for all the myriad of things that come across my desk, that it would be helpful. And I think spark more transparency if we can get that to council in a more regular way.
Mr. President, may I ask Mr. Adams a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Adams, hello, my name is Mary. How are you?
I'm doing spectacular.
And may I ask, we just got done talking to the mayor about somebody who could fulfill that position as a deputy mayor that would have more of a communication friendliness with the council? Is that something you would be able to find in a person?
Oh, definitely. One of the advantages that you have in dealing with the search firm was hours and whatnot is that we actually go in, we generally recruit people in many cases that are not even looking for a job. And so that's the advantage. So we get people to have a reputation for working with the mayor, working with the council, doing diverse things, unique things that you may put on a table that you want people to be able to accomplish. Advantage to a search firm is that we go in, identify, we attract those individuals from other places by selling greatness of the city of Pontiac.
Okay, thank you for that. That answers the next question. You would be looking outside of the local area?
When you do a search, it's really up to you how far you want to go. We generally take all searches as a national search because we look at compatibility of city size, the budget, various unique problems that you may have to your city. And we like to compare those to other areas when we bring people in. If you tell us that you want to restrict to a certain area, then we're willing to do that also to control what we do. But we generally consider things as a national search when we go out. We are a national government.
Thank you very, very much. Mr. President, that concludes.
Turn to the chair.
Okay, this is just the kind of, I think I was listening to Councilwoman Stransky's question and maybe it might assist she and others. Maybe the more pointed question is to ask, maybe it's directed to the Finance Director in terms of how much is in the, in the current budget for the savings for the deputy mayor in terms of how much is there? So then that would let you know exactly if it is over the amount of that would be allocated to the staffing agency, if it would be under, how close? And then in terms of how many, hypothetically, if the person got hired in January, you know, then you've got X amount of months to the fiscal year. So maybe that would assist council in making that determination of, you know, knowing what that figure is. And also, maybe the resolution then should reflect that this amount is coming out of that particular account in terms of for the search for the deputy mayor. So maybe that might be included in the resolution if that is something that Councilwoman Stransky is concerned about. Thank you.
Anybody else from council? Got anything? Okay. We can just vote on this next week.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and vote on this tonight?
Is there a motion?
Tom Lo. Not doing it.
Okay, it's been moved, is there support?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, all right. Rocco?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Edele?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Four A's, two N's.
Okay, rules have been suspended. Now is the motion, vote on this item?
Tom Lo.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, any discussion? Okay.
What?
Rocco?
Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Edele?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Three A's, three N's. The action fails.
All right, thank you.
The action, does it fail or is it tied?
A tie, a tie means it fails.
It does fail, thank you. All right, so the next item, there is no report. So I'm going to turn this meeting at 7:21. Have a good week, everybody.